Corey, we're gonna let you share the screen. You have the presentation? Yeah, so you can share, anybody can share screen on my Zoom, so. Oh, there we go, okay, that works, great. We have Karen. Nice to meet you, Mr. Ryan.
And it was starting to snap, and this guy was like, you were, I will pay over fifty thousand.
We're all here because we're in.
And Jim was like, this is not, we just can't do it right now, but I do it for free. I'm not gonna be in charge of that. And the guy's like, I have to be here to work here. And I was gonna live here all the time.
Well, you're not.
People there would start living in the end. And working for me, I was got tired.
I didn't know you were locked up in town.
It's still a challenge, but a minor.
I was just going with records. There's still also a different shift, no sense.
Well, there's a possibility I'm related to him, so apparently they're very. How you doing, Corey?
Doing pretty good, how about yourself?
Hey, I'm happy to see your face, I'm glad you're on this project now, I do really appreciate it. I know it was a rough entry from where you had to come in and the age you had to break us, but we were nice. I'm very happy to get back there. Good to see you, man, where are you?
Uh, Bluefield, Virginia.
Okay.
So you have to be really commercial. We can't say anything, they haven't gotten official numbers.
The one, he can't write those like two years. The one that's in several million.
Here's what you're saying, we don't have any official. These are the only officials. He said they were. I'll go way back. Way back. Sounds like you've been working at this for a while. Sounds pretty good now? Price reason. It's probably something outside of. You're in the right place. Just made it too, you gotta start this. What's up? Mike, you're here. Since you're in the master service. I can see that. It's the six.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So.
I know you want my notes. Okay. I'm even a real love of that. I'll be like. Corey, could you stop sharing just for a second so Mike can speak to the, anybody that's out there? It doesn't look like anybody's out there, but.
Yeah, I guess we can tell, right?
Yeah, we'd be able to see people that pop on. But. I think it's about five.
Hi, Roger.
What's that, Corey?
Hi. Been a week or two. Yeah.
Well, I thought it was either as small, or there would be a lot of media. And Al and I are.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming down this evening, especially our honored guests, thank you for showing up today. I'm Mike Holstein, I am a member of the Pocahontas County Broadband Council. I've been working on broadband, uh, for those of you that know me, for, this year will make twenty years. A lot of effort that really hasn't gotten us too far, which has, has been a little bit successful. But, uh, in two thousand fifteen, I was appointed the governor, to the governor's office of the Broadband Enhancement Council, where I served as vice chairman. But my biggest claim to fame is that I am on the Pocahontas County Broadband Council. The county commission in, uh, January of two thousand one? Twenty twenty one. Two thousand twenty one officially, uh, declared the Pocahontas County Broadband Council as an official body. And so for the last eighteen months or so, we have been working extremely hard at trying to further broadband projects in the, in the county. The council is made up of a tremendous group of hardworking people, they all have other jobs, so this is sort of a voluntary, uh, organization, but right now we're being chaired by Sarah Riley. So what I would like to say is that the Broadband Council has been working very hard for the county of Pocahontas. Uh, we have applied for every single funding opportunity in the state of West Virginia, and that is available to the state of West Virginia through the federal government. And so at this time though, I would like to ask Sarah to come up and just say a few words about the council and about what she thinks our, our purpose and progress is going to be.
Yeah, our purpose is to talk to anybody that wants to listen about how important Pocahontas County is and how we cannot move forward in the way that we need to, uh, to really build the future that we all want to see here. Uh, without broadband, it's absolutely essential, and so we know that, um, and, you know, our, uh, understanding, I went to an Appalachian Regional Commission meeting, they were talking there a lot about broadband, how do we build broadband in rural America? And the message that I got and took home from that conversation is that we cannot do that without local leadership, right? CityNet can't do that without local leadership, the USDA can't do that without local leadership, and the state of West Virginia can't do that without local leadership. I said, well, I don't know anything about broadband, but I know plenty of local leadership, I know other people who do. So I came home and I called Commissioner Rosecliff and said, Jesse, maybe we should have a broadband council, and then, oh, we could apply for some of this money. And the upshot is, we made the broadband council, Mike tried to get him to chair it, he said, I won't do it. I said, well, how about five round meetings when you come? And he said, yes, I would, I said, I'll take that. Uh, and Mike and I have made a list of people that they felt like were most important to serve on that council, um, to try to help us move forward in a strategic way, and so we have several members of the broadband council currently, um, right now, and then also several other people that help. Uh, Mayor Sam Felton has been a part of the broadband council there, he's been really helpful in overseeing, uh, looking at contacts, looking at quotes from people. We have John Tuggle, who's our executive director from Region Four, that has been absolutely such a, a good partner to Pocahontas County as we work to build broadband. Uh, we're always so lucky to have Ratan Ameesele as the executive director of the Fair Valley Economic Development Corporation, as the hometown Pocahontas County girl who understands so deeply the issues that face us here, uh, and has been such a valuable member of the broadband council. And Kara Rose is our executive director of the, uh, the CCB here at Pocahontas County, who is such an important role for our county, and just continues to grow that. I don't need to tell you how important she is there, so we've had other people that help us, we have some, uh, regular, uh, volunteers and people that help us get news out about what's happening on the broadband council and come faithfully to all of our, our meetings to make sure that news is getting out already.
Oh, you son of a bitch.
Oh. And in the paper, um, and then just other citizens and workers like Al and Kelly, we just understand how important it is, and they come when they can, our broadband meetings are always open, everyone is always welcome to attend them, um, to get, to get educated about what's happening. And, uh, then we have Kelly, Natalie's here with us today, uh, from Conson and Linton, who have been our consultants trying to help us and work together with Region Four and with partners like CityNet to help us figure out how to go forward, so.
And we have a website.
And we have a website, and Kelly has been asking for us, it's a great website. I think we're the only broadband council in the state of West Virginia with our own website, I encourage you to all check it out, especially, uh, totally worth it. Uh, but, you know, that was really the message that I got from the ARC meeting, we created the broadband council and said, if there is money out there, we don't want it to not come to Pocahontas County because we have asked for it, and we don't want anybody at the federal level or anybody at the state level saying, we have all this money and nobody's asking us for it. So, the role of the Pocahontas County Broadband Council is number one, to make sure we're not leaving any money on the table, or if we are, it's not our fault, not because we're not asking for it, it's not because we're not submitting competitive proposals, uh, making those as good as possible, because the councils work together with partners like Region Four and Conson and Linton, and CityNet to go collect community data to put those into applications, but the community participation is really important as we move forward. Uh, and, and to make sure that we continue to work with Pocahontas County in all those different circles, uh, and that our community has a place to bring their concerns, their frustrations with broadband, uh, and know that the county commission is addressing broadband as a priority, they're preparing some other commissioners, they can't do everything, we don't have a county administrator, and so we have to step up as a community to figure out, how do we do the work if you got all this done? And the first grant application that we submitted with the mayor's city, uh, our grant application, and we won two point five million dollars for Pocahontas County. Mike Holstein might say we can get a lot of money, but a lot in the right direction, that comes with another basically a million dollars sitting at a city that's highly investment. So, in, uh, the, these coming years, we started eighteen months ago, and we already have three point five million dollars, like you'll see that investments, they start to come out, there've been some R dot areas that have been awarded, and we have a lot more to do, but when you look, you can go on the broadband council website, there are maps that show you where there's actually reliable high speed fiber, the kind of infrastructure I would be looking for in terms of new business and life hacks in the world that we live in today, right? And there's lines, but let's say the map is this big, let's say that, kinds are like that big too on the map. And this new project that we got brings a whole lot of projects, we still have a whole lot more projects, uh, that need to happen, and we're continuing to, to apply for those and to work with the community to make sure that we can really tell the story of the business owners, the homeowners, people that are pursuing their education.
Oh yeah, man, I'm gonna be on for a while, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm just muted.
But except for your, so you, you might wanna mute yourself, can you hear me? Maybe you muted us. Um, anyway, so that's kind of our journey in the last eighteen months, I think we have wonderful representation of our state corporate groups, and a lot of people have looked at what we've done as the Pocahontas County Broadband Council and been like, that's really cool. And so a lot of people are following in the progress of the Pocahontas County Broadband Council, whether that's the state broadband office, uh, or whether it's, uh, other partners around the state, the Southern Foundation, Generation West Virginia, lots of different funders and state corporate groups that are trying to say, how do we do this, how do we do this in rural America? And I am so proud of the Pocahontas County Broadband Council for really setting a very high standard and a wonderful example of what this can look like when a community comes together with its county commission, with its county leadership, and with its community partners like CityNet and others to really try to help us to work forward, so. I don't know if we are turning it over to CityNet at this point.
Thank you, Sarah. So, uh, well, so what is the name of our website?
Dot com, Pocahontas County Road.
So anyone that would like to go to that website, please do. One of the most important aspects of it, it's a speed test. We need speed test information from everyone in the county all the time, don't just take it once, take it multiple amounts of time. Now, Sarah alluded to maps that we have on our website, we have, as she mentioned, uh, Kelly Ratnoff with TNL, who has been doing our engineering work, and she'll be up here in just a second, but I would like to introduce Chris Morris. Chris is one of our distinguished guests and one of our great partners with a company called CityNet. CityNet is out of Bridgeport, and they put fiber to the resin. It's extremely important, and Chris, I'd like to turn it over to you because you've got a lot of information.
Sure. Thank you, uh, and thanks for allowing me to participate in the evening, I'll stand over here for you. And I do have a, a few slides I would like to share with you, to kind of show who CityNet is and what we've done, and maybe what we, what we can do together going forward. Uh, my name is Chris Morris, I've been with CityNet for about eleven years now, and, um, one of the things that, I'm not gonna stand up and tell you the importance of broadband, I mean, everybody here already knows that that's why we're here. We've had to do that a lot over the last eleven years, so, is, is trying to get people to understand all the different ways it touches your life. And so I will spare you guys that part of the talk, um, I will, uh, play this, you are very fortunate to have a leadership. Um, there is no question on my mind, this challenge is gonna be fixed, and it's gonna be fixed, and when your future, the sad thing is, it sort of already. And, and I can tell you, over the last, I don't know, when the first reconnect application was, but probably been five years ago, maybe, we, we've tried to work with Pocahontas County on, uh, several funding opportunities, and I do want to take a second to explain why. We just don't, we just don't build it ourselves. Um, it is, it costs a lot of money to build that. So, the challenge, and the federal government realizes it, is, you know, if it costs thirty five, forty thousand dollars a mile to build, and there's two people per mile, you'll never get a returning investment, no longer get your investment back. So, that's basically my job with CityNet is to, it's called business development, but really, I've been here to identify, we, we've said, look, we want to go into rural areas where there isn't service, help, help with this challenge. And part of that, and my job is, is, and I hate to say it because I've been unsuccessful here, I have been successful in other areas of this, is identify funding sources and help them look for, get that funding so we can build that work there. You can turn to the next slide for you if you want, um. CityNet, I've been in CityNet for eleven years, CityNet's been around for twenty eight years. Um, we are headquartered in Bridgeport, we have about two hundred employees now, we're continuing forever. Um, we, uh, identified, uh, Pocahontas County as a place that we wanted to, to grow our business a number of years ago. We, uh, Jim, our CEO, president, grew up in Beverly, which is not too far up the road, and, you know, he is, um, loves snowshoe, and, and we applied for a grant to do a project, I think it was in two thousand, eight or nine years ago, to do a project in snowshoe which was successful. Um, and that kind of got us coming in this direction, um, you can go to the next slide, Corey, please. Um, I kinda already hit this, I will tell you real quickly, so, we, we are fiber based, we do have a little bit of wireless, um, networks, we, we have dabbled in a little bit in the northern part of the state, but we really want to be basically solely a fiber provider. If, there's no better technology, you know, we get people that ask, oh, what about satellite? You know, is Elon Musk gonna fix it, is this gonna be obsolete? My answer is, is there anything faster than speed light? Until there's something faster than speed light, there's nothing that's gonna be a better service delivery than fiber. So, the challenge is, is you have to build that work from where you are, and you have to find a way to get to where you want to be. So, we started in Bridgeport, we've grown out, um, from Bridgeport, we've gone up to the more downtown area, Fairmont, Grafton, a few years ago, Phillipi, um, they actually got a grant in the early two thousands to build fiber to every home in Phillipi. It was owned by a city, the challenge they had was, everybody, uh, the grant for city council said, we won't raise the cable bill. And so eventually they didn't invest in their network, they didn't invest in electronics, it was kind of not working very well, so they put it out, and then we bought it, and we turned that around, and now every household that had, has access to gigabit services. So we provide gigabit, it's a thousand night up and down, to, um, to all of our customers. Um, we had going a hundred by hundred, they're a little cheaper price, but I think we're just gonna go gigabit services for everybody. Uh, we charge seventy dollars a month for about a thousand up and down, uh, we also provide cable and phone, uh, over that network. You can change that slide, please. Um, so, uh, let's see here, I kinda just, you guys can go to the next one, I, I can actually get ahead of myself. Um, so, as we, as we identified, this was, um, one of the challenges that we had was getting access to cable. And there wasn't much grant, grant money for years, so we actually were meeting with the state policymakers and said, we need a loan guarantee program. Because when Jim and I walked into a bank and said, we want ten million dollars to build a wire across this, these poles, could hit, hit up, hook up communities, and they were, so, the state created this, the legislature created a loan guarantee program. Um, keeping in mind that we, uh, we did have a project at Snowshoe, and we decided, we, that our, our model was, we want to go down, uh, we were already going over towards Elkins, we wanted to build down from Elkins all the way down through Pocahontas County to Lewisburg, and then, uh, across, uh, Alhead into Webster County and over, uh, through Nicholas County and down to Beckley. So we did that, we, we started that project in two thousand nineteen, next slide. And that says middle mile, so middle mile is just, in case you don't know, is just hitting the community. Um, last mile, you can actually usually cash low last mile projects, because once you get there, that, like, if you get to Moncton, there's a lot of opportu, business opportunity, it's the cost of build, so, anyway.
Don't interrupt, there are just, sure, there are, just like the Phillipi, you can say, who was their provider at that time? How were they able to?
It was, it was provided by the city, they had the city employees that were in the network. One of the challenges that they had was, the businesses, um, were all obviously operational on the weekends, and if their, uh, internet went out, um, and you're in a restaurant, no one can run credit cards, then we'll see, Lewisburg, call funding. And so everything would go down, would go down over the weekend, and so, um, that's one of the reasons why they sold that.
But what was the funding opportunity that allowed them to connect at the time? Is that where you're at?
It was, I, I don't remember what the grant was called, it was literally, the, the guy that did it was a guy named, I think it was Joe Mataliani or something like that, anyway, and Lainey, Lainey or, I don't know who you mean. And I don't remember what the funding source was, it was due to the USDA, because we, when we, uh, we bought the network, and then we had wanted the USDA to transfer those assets to City, but it was a USDA grant, um, but they got, and it was, I think, like two thousand three-ish, um, that they, they started building.
And they had no other provider at that time?
No, and that was part of the problem, so, and what ended up happening was kind of funny, and this goes back to the middle mile issue, they built this, basically a super highway in, in the city of Phillipi. Well, they had all this fiber, went to every, every business and household, but they couldn't get out to the internet because they didn't have connectivity to the actual internet. And so, they had to get a frontier and say, we want to buy a circuit to get to the work. And so Frontier said, well, for forty five minute circuit, now, I, I, I have good internet in my house, I have one in forty five for me. They ran the entire city on a forty five minute circuit, because that's all they could, they could afford to buy from. So they had to throttle, they had this data super highway in Phillipi, but they had to get people one minute at their house. They had to throttle everybody down because they had a bomb that wanted to, that was another part. And so when we bought the, when we bought their network, we built fiber, it's a lot to fiber with mainstream, now we have a middle mile network. That allowed us to remove that bomb.
I didn't know the funding source that they used, um, but there are, there are a bunch of funding sources now, way more than there were a few years ago.
So, um, one of the funding sources that, you know, we, we, for years, I don't think CityNet was very successful at tapping into some of the federal resources that were available, and that part of it was because, we didn't make very good effort, but part of it was because the way the rules were, nothing was eligible in West Virginia. I will say, some of our federal allegations have worked diligently to get this changed, and now a lot of state is eligible for funding. The FCC did a, a reverse auction in two thousand eighteen, we bid on it, so basically they'd say, identify census blocks and say, if you're, if you're a provider, you can guarantee service to these specific census blocks, and we're gonna say that it's X number of dollars, and then you bid against other providers, and we go down, and whoever's willing to take the least amount of money to serve those households, we'd, we'd win that award. So we, we did that in two thousand eighteen, we won a, a, a good bit, a total amount of six point four million, just under six point four million, for just under nine hundred homes in Taylor, Pocahontas, Webster, Nicholas, and Greenbrier counties. So, i- i- if you look at it though, Taylor County up here, that was over thirty percent of the homes were in Taylor County. So, and it was also right next to our destiny network. So we have, um, these deployment dates, we have to hit, um, timeframes. By the August of two twenty twenty two, we had to have forty percent of the homes built with gigabit service, and we had to go through an audit with the federal government to show that we've done it. And we had, one of the things the federal government's done is, they actually hold providers accountable for grants now. So we put up letters of credit, and if we don't provide the service that we're supposed to provide, they take those letters of credit. So we had to put up six hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars the first year, six hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars the second year, and if we met our, our deadlines, we didn't have to do the third. Um, so, I'm happy to tell you, we are ahead of schedule, um, we are, we were over, um, the forty percent, we were closer to fifty percent. Um, we. We, we will get those projects all done. There are not a lot of households in Pocahontas County. He says Pocahontas County. According to the FCC data, it was fourteen homes. According to our field study, it was eleven. I believe five of those eleven homes actually purchased, gave it internet almost right now. So. So the funding is, they need that strictly at homes. We, as a company, very much look for business opportunities along those routes. So, but we are required to provide service to any home in those census blocks. But again, we always, you know, we take into consideration the business opportunities along those routes as well.
So, yeah, I would say just as somebody that's looked at that map, and I told you that I, my house is in one of those sitting in areas, but like it's just where my house is.
In the CAF two? Are you sure it's not Ardo? Because we want Ardo too. Ardo is a lot bigger. Okay, because it was the same.
Too many reverse auctions.
Right. So CAF two was a predecessor.
Honey, guys, do this all day long.
CAF two was, it was basically the exact same program. It was a pilot program. They learned from it and then they did the Ardo recently. And we did it in a lot more homes in Pocahontas County. And I have a map for that. And there are a lot more homes. I think there's at least six hundred.
Yeah, it looks more like.
It might have been more than that. I think it's on the slide. Other questions before I get to the next, next slide? Okay, Corey, can you hit the next one for me? Thank you, Corey, by the way, for doing this. I was just hitting. So I, this is, it's a little bit blurry. This is obviously coming down from the northern part, from Randolph County. And the blue fiber is what exists today. That's CityNet own fiber. The yellow fiber is, is fiber that we currently lease from Frontier. And, um, and then the purple is, is fiber, just a little bit of purple right here. That we leased from, from Spruce Stop Center Box. And then the orange fiber, which is, uh, there's a little bit in here, there's a little bit right there and then going on down, is fiber that we are going to construct. And it will, the construction is, it's, I guess it's being mentioned to you now, should begin in January twenty one. And is that the pace that brings you to Ed Ray? Yes, I believe that's right. So I know it sounds like a long time, you know, fourteen months when you're constructing networks, not there. I got worse news for a lot of other folks than being done in twelve, thirteen months. So. Next slide, please.
Hey, that makes sense. When you say construction, is this mostly on the gold or?
So ninety five percent area. And we want area fiber for a number of reasons. Number one, it is way cheaper to build. Number two, it is way easier to access homes. You get the big, you hear about the Facebook fiber and then there was a company called Z, they buried their fiber because their networks, they just sell to Amazon, Facebook, um, you know, all the big tech companies. We wanted houses and businesses. So we want everything up in the air where we can easily access the fiber. And it's like probably fifteen percent impossible. Maybe even, maybe it might be even more or less than that. So the ARC grant, if everyone's aware of, that's an exciting, just like Sarah said, a very exciting thing. And we're very excited to be a partner on that and happy to, uh, to, um, to, to put up our match for that. My understanding is that, that Kelly and TNL are in the design and engineering phase of that right now.
Correct. We anticipate design to be completed by summer of next year, twenty twenty three.
So this, this project is actually going to be fed coming up from Marlinton. So we'll be building fiber up from Marlinton to connect in and, and, and serve all those homes along those green racks. And again, generally, uh, any household within, and we'll obviously also provide service to businesses as well and maybe even further. But generally, just for trying to figure out an estimate, we say within a thousand feet of a route, we can easily become drops. Provide service on those routes. According to the application I was looking at, when we put it together, that's about, it's over a thousand customers along that route. And the fiber that's going to run up and actually provide service to that project will be built at the same time. So it's on the top, same time frame. So that when it's done, it's the, it's the trade will provide service. So we're talking about.
First quarter of twenty twenty four. And that's our portion of that's about fifty miles of fiber.
Very excited about that project. Uh, next slide, please. So the Ardo, and this is what you were talking about, CityNet, and I will tell you this, because it was Jim, Jim Martin and I, we were trying to make sure we knew what we were doing, we were bidding all of these areas. And I can tell you, it's a little bit intimidating because you don't want to win a census block that is far removed from everything else and have a responsibility, substantial penalty. Have the responsibility to find a way to get over there and not win the areas between. So it was really stressful and it kind of happened here. We, we won these shaded areas and in the northern part of, of the county. We bid on everything that's in Pocahontas County. The vast majority of it was won by Frontier. So, and I can tell you this, when we bid, it started off as, at a certain price, we bid at ninety percent. We bid at eighty percent. We bid at seventy percent. We bid at sixty percent. We bid at fifty percent of it. I believe we got down to thirty percent of reserve price and I think they wanted it twenty percent. And what Jim would say is they just knew we were going to bid on it because they knew this scenario, we were in the growth. And so they were just trying to. But nonetheless, um, we are, we are going to do those projects. Um, you're talking about, um, according to the FCC data, five hundred and seventy eight households in our census block here. So in these shaded areas, the FCC identified five hundred and seventy eight homes. And we are required by, and what, what they tell you is, it's your own project. If a customer lives in any of those census blocks, even if they don't have a home there now, instead of moving in, they build out. You have ten days from the day they request service, the term on this project. So, and if you don't, they'll come back and. So we're going to do those projects. We're excited about it. We were very disappointed that we didn't win these areas. And that's a challenge that we have to come up with. A way, and one of the ways that we wanted to come up with it, we thought we had come up with, was using the reconnect funds to do a project in between that would then also connect those areas. I'll tell you about that in a minute. Next slide. So right now, uh, that is what will the, the, the service that CityNet will be able to position to provide gigabit services via fiber by the end of twenty one. So we're talking about within two years, that fiber will all be constructed and anyone that lives along the, uh, uh, along the routes or in the shaded areas will have access to gigabit services from city. Internet, phone and cable. Next slide. I included this just, and I will, we'll go to bias real quickly. This was the Pocahontas County Reconnect Two that we submitted. And really, I wasn't sure who the audience would be. And I just wanted to make sure everyone stood. We've been working with, with folks here for years to try to, to get this challenge pressed. That wasn't fun. You skip to the next slide.
But we're going to figure out how to try.
So yes, so this is reconnect round three. And if you remember the shaded areas that CityNet won, this area and this area, this would have allowed us to not worry about how are we going to connect those two service areas. So that was something that we partnered with, with you guys on. Now, my understanding is that, uh, the county does not receive any formal communication from the USDA on that application. I had a standing call with a USDA DA rep on a couple of the other projects that we have in other areas of the state. And about two weeks ago, I said something about, have you heard anything about this project? And he said, oh, that's, that's, that's been rejected. And then so I asked why. And the way the process works, we have, they, the, the USDA requires that proposed service areas are advertised. And other providers can protest or challenge the project. And, and they, based on, they can say, we already have service that meets the minimum speed definitions in those areas. And so, uh, as it was related to me by the USDA, a local service provider contacted the USDA when they saw this application and said, we can provide service that meets the minimum speed. I think it was twenty five down. And so one of the things that I came to you to talk about today is we wanted to do that project for a number of reasons, a whole lot of reasons. First of all, I thought Michael's scheme was going to kill me years ago when the other one, the, the two didn't make it fine. Uh, or one. But we, we think it's a great project and we think it's an area that needs it more than basically where else in state. And so I want to talk to you guys, now or informally at the end of the meeting, where do we go from here? I mean, what, what are our next steps? There, unlike any other time that I've been involved with, with government and I've worked in and around government for, for twenty, plus twenty five years. There's never been one. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost doesn't make sense. There are a number of funding sources. There is a reconnect four process, application process that is open today. It is, the deadline is November second. And I had a meeting with all of our, our executive team this morning and I had, I told them what was going on. And said, is this something that we are willing to do to get back to Pocahontas County and say, hey, look, we can apply again? And everyone around the table said, yes, I mean, we've been trying to do this for years. What we concerned anybody had was, if this wasn't funded this time, because a local provider simply provides service in that area, what's going to change for around here? Is the same provider going to raise the same question and kill the project?
Just a second, Gary. You said you were required to provide service in ten days.
For, when we accept funding for an Ardo.
So that rule doesn't apply to the objection.
The law that applies is the cost of the service. How much the other entity would cost to charge.
We need service.
What you would charge for it? When you, now see, the other provider received BIP for, isn't it?
Yes.
And so I, I don't.
R U S.
And that was, that was right as I, as before I got to CityNet. And I'm not sure about the rules on BIP. If there was, John, do you know if there was a rule as far as the cost? I always said something like.
I mean, I, I don't think there is.
So they can say, don't, they can write the same service, but you can charge.
Correct.
And there's certainly no requirement that I'm aware of for any of these existing. For them to object to this project, it doesn't matter what they charge.
Right.
As long as they say they will provide.
But they don't have to say that they will provide it to the entire area, just to some part of the area.
Right. So what we were thinking was, oh, let's just cut out the area that they, that they committed to provide service to. I think it was like twenty homes or something. Or they said it did. The challenge is, is then we do this again and then they just add a couple more houses in another, in the new project.
Yes, sir. Their, their BIP area is defined. And so I think for our purposes, we cut out the entire BIP area. And we serve everything outside of that.
And I, I'd have to look at a map and see what that is and that would involve you guys and figuring out.
But I think, I think there's also, I mean, you know, while we're talking about it, we have to engage them. And they have to invest in Pocahontas County or they have to get out of the way. And we, we need to. Yeah. And so like, I know that everybody in the broadband council, even though we live in all different parts of the county, are really committed to not leaving any part of the county behind. And we cannot allow a provider to, to hold hostage.
Now, to that point, I will say this, and I'm just making this part up. I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But let's say that, and this is not the case. Let's say that they challenged, oh, wow, that actually works. Not used to, um, uh, my kids do that to every screen, like they go to the TV and, but anyway. Let's say that they just, they protest and said, we can provide, uh, service between Marlinton and Dunn. I almost lost, I think I lost my, my, my point.
You were going to say if they challenge that area.
Yeah, I'll go back to it and say, I think I'll remember.
Michael was talking about people just cut out the whole area and I was like, okay.
Oh, well, I know what I was going to say. So, and so my point was, if we do all this and there's a little piece right there, we can always use our own money to complete the project and go into the areas that weren't funded. And it, you know, obviously if they block all of that, we can't make, you know, we can't pay for all that. Most likely, right. But we can always go back and pick up areas that get cut out.
Well, their R U S service area is defined. And they, so that can be blocked out completely. But they haven't fulfilled that yet.
And that should be pointed out to the USDA too, is that, look, they got a, a grant to do this. And I don't know any of this stuff and I don't know these people. And I was.
There were other, there were difficult circumstances for a number of reasons.
Right.
But the fact is, from our perspective on the broadband council, citizens in Pocahontas County that need service.
And they're not getting it.
Some of them are getting it and some of them are happy with their service. But there are people that are waiting, there are people in a backlog and there are people that are not able to be connected. Right?
So, you know, from our perspective, that was my, my number one agenda, my goal, I guess my only goal tonight, other than actually meeting people that I've talked to over the computer before, is to say, hey, we'd love to do this project with you. And there are funding sources. I mean, I mentioned reconnect. There's a bunch of money coming to the state. You know, and we have relationships with people in the state that are more accessible. And so there may be some state funding opportunities there. The USDA just announced today a grant, I think, for fiber run between Davis and, and Elkins and Tucker and Randolph County. So the USDA has money. There's going to be Ardo round two, I think, next year. And so there is going to be a lot of opportunities for us to go after that.
It's just, that is just so, it's so frustrating. And it is so frustrating to be a local community that has tried so hard for so long with such an enormous need. We cannot do this without the federal government's burden and shift and to be blocked over and over and over.
And especially when the rural community is supposed to have the property now. How much more role can you give?
Yeah. And so it's just like, agencies aren't talking well to each other. Fine, there's money, but like the rules are messed up so that they're getting it. I know that you're an expert on this, you already understand it, but it's just like, you say, oh, there's all this money. I'm like, yeah. But we, in our experience, can't mostly get to it, even though it's supposed to be.
We haven't successfully done it yet.
Right. Right. So, I mean, I think I feel totally compliments. Okay, for the broadband council to say, we're, you know, you have been a successful partner for us. Like we want you guys to also please advise us. It's a matter for us to apologize. Should we do reconnect round four? Like I think we are committed as a county to also engage with that other service provider and say, listen, we have you cannot stand in the way of people's housing.
Well, I have, I have engaged already, but I haven't gotten the response.
Right.
Yes, sir.
When the reconnect four application, are they subject to being blocked as well?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes.
Now, when the Ardo two comes, and again, so one thing I'd point out is in this area, there was one by Frontier. Right now, the USDA is saying, you can still do this project through those Ardo areas. A lot of times the federal government will let you do that, but because it hasn't been constructed yet, who knows if it ever will be. They're saying, yeah, you go ahead and apply, those will be considered. So I mean, that's good news for, you know, for.
It was actually part of the reason why reconnect two was denied. Because they didn't allow us to serve what was initially one in an Ardo area. However, they reversed that for round three. We still think that we've been denied that, so we got.
Yeah. I mean, it is an interesting thing that, that Dusty brought up before the meeting, like if there's still an opportunity to see if they would withdraw that complaint to this application. And that's a question.
I, I, I think.
Great thing for the commissioner to follow it about.
Yeah.
I mean, you haven't got a formal notice that's protected.
Maybe changing this up into, back to that ten day thing. You don't, you're hooked up in ten days. What happens?
Funds. That's, and that's just in the Ardo areas. It's not in the reconnect projects. I mean, there's time range you have to hit, but the Ardo areas, I mean, it's ten days. You're considered the carrier of last resort. You're treated like they become a phone provider, it's treated at that. Um, you're considered the carrier of last resort, you're treated like, they become a phone provider, it's treated at that point, you have ten days and people are.
And Chris, I know I'm saying some things out loud that you already know, but I know that sometimes it's helpful when you're in your position to be like, this is what we're hearing from communities.
Sure.
People are trying and frustrated, and it's hard, and we really are trying.
I like your idea, I mean, there's no harm in saying, hey, look, we haven't got rejection matter, I would, I would, I would do two things, I'd reach out to the provider that protested, and I would also contact Ron Corne, I'd, I'd contact Senator Manchin and Senator Capito and say, hey, look, we're hearing that this is rejected, and this is ridiculous. These areas don't have service, it hasn't, they, they're not going to, apparently, um, and we've heard rumors that it's going to be rejected, but it hasn't been.
And if you find an area everybody was supposed to get served in.
And furthermore, we've asked the company that protested to withdraw their protest, and just tell them that, and then see what, see what that other says. I think, because everything that I was told by the USDA was, but for that protest, it was going to be approved, did you hear it too, John?
Yes.
And you do have a great reason, you know, John, he hears more than I do. So.
John, the way you said that makes me think that maybe you don't think that's the only reason.
No, I, I have to be careful.
Okay.
Someone help formulate that letter, let's, uh, let's do that, so you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just, and if you're willing to go get in the car, this is, I mean, yes, we need a formal letter, but like.
Well, the other thing to tag on with that is, okay, if you don't tell your complaint, whether you don't surface.
That's right.
And not a hand.
And Chris, how, how would, I don't into your job at all, and then, how do you even apply for just like this reconnect four, when you, when you don't know, how about reconnect three or what's happened, uh, prior to that, how do you even go forward with some of this plan?
It's, it's a challenge.
I mean, that's what he's faced with, they want on reconnect, they had to take that chance. And, and the whole, the whole protocol is just, it's so convoluted, I don't know how anyone makes this.
Do you have a question, Sam? Do you have a question?
Yeah, but it's not very. And I'm, I'm just curious if, are there any funding sources that do blow this off?
Um.
E D O?
Probably E D O is the one.
USDA.
E D O has a pretty good match.
Is there a third person? Um, I'm thinking of there's a lot of households, it's like this is out of the houses.
Yeah, that's true.
There's a lot of thirty-dollar venture for those low-cost contractors, it's a lot. Fifty-two hundred, this tornado, um, we're in Pocahontas County, everyone is running businesses out of that house.
The, the, the challenge to that is not necessarily that certain business, that that business needs it, you know, hire people. So that business has to say, if you bring the internet, I'm going to hire you, I mean, that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
My question, uh, I'm presuming that the reason.
Which we know is incredibly twisted, nobody in this room thinks that's a good idea, actually, the way you can develop it happens to everyone, I was going to say that out loud.
That the reason that so many providers, because it's great, because I mean, if I was in Washington DC, I could probably have a dozen providers, I mean, because they, they, they pay their own, they pay for it, there's a concentration of people saying, you're in a big city, you would deserve it. It's, it's cheap to fire people up, and out here, we have to get a grant, and they're only going to give one group, right? And the people who want it, want to have a nominee over that area, that's what they're fighting, is that what's going on? Is it, and I have a follow-up question, is it possible or smart or stupid, even consider working with another company, and your company would work with Frontier or something together?
Take a different one.
I'm joking. I mean, is that possible to work together, uh, as a partnership like some businesses do for a product?
I, I wouldn't say it's not impossible, I mean, we generally have a good relationship with all of them, most of the providers stay under one. Um.
I, I can answer that somewhat, almost all the major providers want to own the assets here, and that's a big challenge up front.
And, and there's a, there's actually a business reason for that, um, so like, and, bless you.
Thank you.
So like, if we build this, if this network's constructed, and we all of a sudden, just like we were talking minute, five minutes ago, well, this didn't get funded down here because it was taken out. And you want CityNet to then use their money to build this, we need to be pretty sure, not pretty sure, we need to know that we're going to be able to get there if we're going to spend our money to provide service along that little line right there. Otherwise, it's a stranded asset that we can never be sure that we can access and provide service to. So if we're going to put money out of our pocket to provide, uh, service to those homes, we have to know that, okay, we have access to the fiber that runs this way and down to it. Otherwise, um, it could just be something we can use to space for a month.
Can I get a ballpark figure about how much it costs for a mile of fiber?
So, aerial is roughly thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a mile. And believe it or not, fifteen to twenty of that, thousand of that amount is, I mean, the fiber itself is not much, it's probably a dollar a foot. Um, most of that cost is called make ready, where we pay Frontier, where we pay First Energy to, um, prepare the poles for us to get on there. So, there's all these requirements, especially on the electrical poles, of where you are with regard to the neutral, where you are in regard to the ground clearance, and so, um, if, it, it, or if there's a hole, and not necessarily in rural areas, but when you get more populated areas, you'll see too much, too much fiber on a pole, and then the poller will say, well, you did engineering on this, and it's going to, you got to replace the pole, it can't bear the weight. And so, the last person on pays to replace the entire pole and move everyone, and that can be costly.
So that's, a lot of the cost is just poles, it's over. But I'm also, this is what I think I remember years, a couple of years ago, that every seven or eight years, every surface highway brought on to seventy, eighty thousand dollars a mile. And they do that every several years, and this is a, pretty much a one-time thing, and occasionally got a, I'm just using a comparison of the super information highways.
It's not that much.
And state highways, we need to get this in. The cost, uh, the government should see this, the paper of highways.
And I think, I think it was, I think you asked the question, uh, I'm going to go that I didn't answer, and the general policy has been, um, for the federal government, is let's focus on areas, and, and, you know, I'm going to hear this, that don't have access to any, any service. And then, we'll, we'll go back and, and look at areas that are, they consider underserved, um, they want to focus on unserved areas, which is a lot of Pocahontas County.
Is that twenty-five, under twenty-five?
Under twenty-five and three. And so, the, the thought process though, and what we do as a provider is say, okay, look, we're in Elkins, we're going to go to Marlington. Um, we can't use grant money in Marlington because Marlington's uncertain, but we can use grant money to build and provide service all over the place. But then, if we want to go into Marlington and compete, federal government doesn't say you can't use your own money to go into these areas. And so, it doesn't just help areas that are completely uncertain, it helps the rural, the towns around those rural areas too, that are uncertain.
Well, and also, I just want to be, um, Michael, the time is six eighteen, there's a rush, but at the same time, like, I want to be against.
Well, Corey, if you want to skip to the last slide, there's just like one or two slides left, and really, all it is is, um, that's what we want Pocahontas County to look for. That is.
Yeah, that's what we want.
So that is all the projects that we showed earlier that we're going to do with that reconnect fiber as well. And if we have that, I mean, you're going to hit, then you also have to remember, a whole bunch of areas in the middle of that have ARDOF money coming into it for Frontier as well. And I hope Frontier builds every, every one of those households, I, I mean, one of the things we tell people is, we are a small West Virginia company. We're not going to fix broadband for every single West Virginian, um, we, we want to do our part, and we will, um, deliver what we promise. And, and, and so, every route, obviously, we're on this screen, we're part of it, is where we hope to build, but everywhere that we have accepted funding, we will get there. Um, and we'll provide big services to those houses, so, thank you for letting me be here, sorry if I talked too long.
I, I'll reiterate, I've worked with CityNet for a long time, uh, they've been great partners all the years, uh, they've tried and tried and tried.
We'll get it.
Yeah, just like the rest of us, and, and there's frustration, frustration about, uh, as, as, you know, we pointed out, and Chris pointed out, you know, grant money is supposed to be split for underserved or uncertain areas first, we know the majority of Pocahontas County is uncertain. But, at one point, they actually said, well, Pocahontas County is not rural.
I know.
How do you respond to that, you know?
I do, I said, yeah.
You make some company work here for a week, it really changes everybody's perspective.
So, uh, at any rate, I want to introduce Kelly Raplin, if you have anything you'd like to say, Kelly, Kelly's with T and L.
Well, I am not going to follow Chris, and we have some big presentation, but I do want to thank everybody, we've been doing consulting for Pocahontas County now for a while. We're ready, we stand ready to help you with any funding applications, reconnect four, we love working with the community, out of all of our clients, I can honestly say, Pocahontas County has the most input at the community level, and that helps us, because our engineers are looking at maps and county houses on a screen. You guys talk to each other, you can tell us where you have service, where you need service, what your challenges are, so we really appreciate your input, we love working with you. Region four is instrumental in the success of Pocahontas County, I don't know if anybody said it, but Amanda, John, Region four, their interaction with the community, with us, CityNet, with the funding agency, it's, it's a formula for success. I know we haven't had success yet, but we've had success, everybody, we've had a lot of success.
We want a lot more, we want everybody's success.
We are having to do that, and that's all I have to say, if anybody has any questions for, or projects, I mean, I'll be the answer to this.
I just want to reiterate for, for T and L and Chris both that, uh, getting to Edrake is a big thing, as far as I'm concerned. Because when I think about, um, you know, the motoring, Northwest hardwoods, uh, we've, we've got the industrial plant there that if, if fiber was there, it makes Ruth Anna's job a lot easier to fill that place. That's been one of, that's been one of the missing links, and I never really, until we got into this, I never really thought about what a negative that that is for that site.
Oh, my God, yeah.
So, you know, uh.
Ooh, it's up there.
Well, if you need a place to like store all your stuff while you're working, Pocahontas County, we have a great deal for you.
But there is, there, there's thirty thousand, uh, square feet there that needs to have twenty-five or thirty or forty jobs real easy.
And believe it or not, we, um, just got into the residential in the last few years, our, our purpose has always been on business. And so, when we go into an area, we're going to, I mean, it's our natural inclination to go with this, we're not consulting, um, the residential. We look at this as a way to get in the area where we can go to residential.
I still don't fully understand though, if you're, when, when you get service across through nineteen, what is the difference here? That Frontier blocks us from hooking to you, that Philippi did not have to contend with at that time, what was, what's the difference with all of that?
What is your hand?
Well, that, we're just talking about, I, I'm thinking about, I was, was talking, you used your two, the two nineteen route, I was, I said, you know, I said, we're, we're a thousand feet to two nineteen.
Is ETOP fiber Frontier built?
We knew, but the difference is things have changed. That was what?
Fifteen years ago.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And the programs have just changed, they've, they've been evolving, and at that time, uh, that was.
And Masessow, I think, Johnny Masessow, I think, was sitting there. He's, uh, he was a great local chapter.
The other thing there to be keep is to say is, they had their own electric company, everything that's, that's how they were able to get that right. And for everybody's, you know, a lot of the money that's gone out in America, especially with the reconnect, has gone to existing co-ops that have power. And it's a lot easier for them to do this than somebody that does it themselves, so that's, they, they have control of the poles, that is a big part of that, so that's, that's part of the formula. So that's why, it's, that's why West Virginia, it's actually a harder struggle.
I think, I think the mayor wants CityNet to come tomorrow to where you think. That's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing. Yes.
And, and, and they try to sell us for three, five, three, you don't always have that.
That's right.
And then we go three.
My bill went up in my service.
Yeah.
Yeah, what a, what a, I get two and a half.
I may need to answer your question, this may not be right, but what I think is, is the fiber that Frontier built with, using we talked grant money? When we leased some fiber, and it was in Pocahontas County, on that route, they basically undermined the program, we, they only had to provide us from the eight point to the Z point. They didn't have to allow us to actually spur off of that and provide service along that route, so there's actually great funded fiber that runs on the grid, and there's households along there that don't get access to fiber.
And that goes back, probably, it says fifteen, twenty years of this county, I believe, is that right?
Two thousand eight. Two thousand eight.
Yeah, that was, that was that program, we're actually in the long term.
So Kelly, thank you very much, T and L has been a great partner, even though you did it. But you do, you do a lot of extra reports, and the mapping and the things that you see on our website all originate with T and L, and thank you for doing that. And I would be remiss not to talk about John for a minute, John and Amanda, I have worked on broadband, as I said, for many, many years. And I've been working with John since.
Somewhere back.
Yeah.
When you had those sessions, that's.
The broadband services, yeah, and you attended those, um, and we, and pushing forward ever since. And the knowledge that you guys have on the state and local level is fantastic, and I really appreciate, Kelly, what you were saying about how involved this community is, I want to say on record, Pocahontas County is the first county in the state of West Virginia that formed its own project. And I really appreciate everybody doing that. So, does anyone have any questions before we close this?
Mike, can you talk about, you're on the State Broadband Council.
Yes.
Can you talk to them about how that operates, works, you know, who's up there, and so forth, this and that?
Uh, well, I can, sure, uh, so the chairman is, uh, Robbie Morris, who also is part of the Randolph County Economic Development Corporation. Uh, I'm the vice chairman, uh, and then it's just a group of people that are representative of rural, uh, business users. Uh, the school system, the state school system has representatives on it, there are ex officio members that are both delegates and senators from the legislature. Um, and the purpose of that council is to promote the, the, uh, acquisition of federal funds as much as possible, and to plan and distribute, uh, any funds that we have as well, the, the state of West Virginia has as well, in various programs. And there are programs that we have applied for in Pocahontas County, in general, we have not applied to state granted programs because we have been applying to these federal programs, uh, and they, the state programs didn't fit, but there are more of those coming, coming along. The state is going to be getting huge amounts of money from the federal government for broadband purposes, so we have to see what those rules are going to be, and part of the broadband council is to sort of guide the rulemaking through the legislation. And we've been trying, and the council also tries to ease the, uh, product, uh, or the production of broadband, so we have been working with the legislature on rules on pole attachments, on right-of-ways through the Department of Highways. Um, and the legislature in general has been very good, it, it's a hundred and eighty degrees from what it used to be, as Chris said. Uh, all pro broadband now, for the state, what you're doing, we really appreciate that. And I also want to mention Sam.
Okay, I wanted to say one thing before I have to go.
Are you still president of Rock?
Yes.
So, Sam, tell me, the great mayor of Marlington has been involved in broadband and is chairman of the Regional Optical Communications Group, and working with Region four. So there are a lot of people in this. and working with Region four. So there are a lot of people in this room and on our council that have pushed and pushed and pushed broadband in every possible way. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do have to slide out at six thirty. It is my niece's birthday and I have to go. But thank you guys all so much. There's one thing that I just wanted to lift up before, I want to say, thank you for coming, thank you for coming in person. Come back all the time. We are great partners. Keep investing in us. And the other thing that I really wanted to acknowledge is the leadership of Oklahoma County Commission.
Yes.
Among all of the many county commissions in the state and particularly the leadership of Commissioner Rex Close. Heading with Robin. And I think, you know, I think the Oklahoma County commission came into this work in a spot of saying, we know we need it, but we don't really have any idea what that means or what we do with that or how we do it. And God for Region four trying to walk us through it and, you know, making the progress that we can. But I think just like continuing to, to, to work with these partners and put in the time and the diligence to keep broadband a priority on behalf of the commission for Oklahoma County is so important. And in other areas of the state, sometimes it gets territorial, right? Of who's in charge of what and visit the city. And so then, and I just think this has been such a wonderful example of people working together across our municipalities, with our county leadership, with a group of wonderful community volunteers and a group of really expert partners that helps us. I think we're heading in the right direction.
I want to say also, not just because you gave me a positive comment, mine, but I was afraid at one point when you were ready to retire from the observatory, you was, you know, twenty years was probably enough.
It was.
But you took a deep breath and we would, we would be challenged to be where we are now without your leadership there also.
Thank you so much for saying that. I, I appreciate that, but you're right. I was, I'm really good. Twenty years of being mad against the wall was, was long enough. And I'll continue to work best weekend with this group of people and, you know, boy, if we get a Reconnect, we'd be a great shift. But, you know, Ruth Anna now, Green River Valley Development Corporation, her moving in, the work that you guys have done, putting applications together, all the stuff behind the scenes. Thank you so much. Such a pleasure. I'm going to say one thing about Jesse Gross, folks. I, I had him out going door to door doing surveys when we were putting applications together. So this is a guy that will work. He puts his money where his mouth is. Thank you, Sarah. And thank you, everyone, for coming, for calling in. Do you have anything else?
I would just ask a question. If it's okay. Perhaps if we talked with T and L and looked at what that project would look like with the BIM output?
Yep.
And then if you hear anything about protests or feedback that you did with that.
We still use the air stays matches on the permits a lot because that's key, I think, having that match.
Yes.
Oh, we're one of those.
Right, but like using that match. Right.
So you really, Reconnect four, you need to jump on it.
Yeah, we need to jump on it right now.
It's due to the response. And it should be fairly easy.
Yeah, and T and L has T and L has the location of the, because I worked with them on it.
Just want to make sure we're on the right grid.
And I can, well, let's close that and we'll talk about one, one thing real quick. Kara, thank you so much for your help.
I did record this. We'll get it on the website somehow. We might be, I might need some technical assistance making sure that I can find the file. Sometimes I have a hard time finding it after I recorded it, but I'm sure lots of them are familiar with how to do that.
Thank you.
Corey, thank you very much. I'm going to disconnect now. Thank you.
Thank you.